This time I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting in the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and we'll call upon Commissioner Richard Uribe to lead us in an edification.
Almighty and eternal God, worthy to be held in reverence by all the children of men, we give you humble and hearty thanks for the innumerable blessings with, without any merit or worthiness on our part you have bestowed on us. Bestow your grace on all nations of the earth, best especially our country and its inhabitants, and all who are in authority. Let your glory dwell in our land. We commend to you the care of all our schools and ask you to grant that our children may grow in useful knowledge and virtue and bring forth wholesome fruits of life. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every course of evil action. Make us who come from many nations with many languages a united people. Defend our liberties and give those whom we have entrusted with the authority of government the spirit of wisdom that they may be justice and peace in our land. When times are prosperous, let our hearts be thankful, and in troubled times do not let our trust in you fail. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority. Among us, we ask especially for our mayor and city council here in this great city of Harlingen, that they may be guided by your spirit, be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them we may be governed quietly and peacefully. We ask all this through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you, the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome all of you to our meeting here tonight. Glad to have you here, and I wish everybody a Happy New Year and hope that everyone had a joyous Christmas and holiday season. With that, we're going to go to item one, which is the approval of the minutes of October 16th, 2018. I ask if there are any additions or corrections to the minutes. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item two is the consent agenda, is your motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move, Mayor. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. We're going to pass item three, because with the holidays, staff's not ready to present on that item at this time. Item four is the consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading to annex and to establish the initial zoning to general retail GR district for a 1.0 plus or minus acre of land, being the north 50 feet of a 2.766 acre tract of land out of block 54, David and Stevenson subdivision located on the west side of Briggs Coleman Road, north of Loop 499, applicant John Drennan.
Thank you.
Rodrigo?
Mayor, City Commissioner, City Manager. In accordance with the Texas Local Government Code and the City Court of Ordinances, three public hearings are required to have been and have been conducted as related to the voluntary annexation request. We're looking at this portion right here, the north 50 foot. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the subject property into a four-lot commercial subdivision under the name of Storage Depot Subdivision. The applicant is proposing an expansion of their existing storage unit business. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
If anybody has any questions for Rodrigo, then can we ask the city attorney to read the caption, please?
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Harlingen through annexation and establishing the initial zoning to general retail district consisting of one acre tract of land, plus or minus, being the north 50 feet of a 2.755 acre tract of land out of block 54, David and Stevenson subdivision located on the west side of Briggs Coleman Road, north of Loop 499, providing for publication and ordaining other matters relating to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item five is a presentation by Carlos Sanchez, Assistant City Manager on the current state and efforts to improve the Tony Butler Golf Course. Carlos.
Mayor, Commissioners, Happy New Year and good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to come before you today to bring this information regarding the Tony Butler Golf Course. What I do plan to present to you is information related to the Tony Butler Golf Course performance as a business unit, and then also touch on some of the internal and external factors that have an impact on the participation levels of the game of golf as an industry, and most importantly, here locally, as locally here in our golf course. As a business unit, we operate as an enterprise fund, and as such, we are expected to operate with a balanced budget where revenues cover operating expenses and provide for reserves for reasonable or foreseeable capital improvements. We have as a business unit a mission statement, and our mission statement is to be a golf course of choice by providing exceptional recreational and social experience to all of our customers, those that live here, visit, and work in our community. As a business, we've been in operation for almost 90 years, since back in 1929 when the golf course first was established. We recognize that there's rich history in this golf course, and there's significance in the significance that the Tony Butler Golf Course represents in our community. As a business unit, again, our goals are to manage revenues and operational expenses, to operate within a balanced budget, develop programs that maintain current levels of play for golfers, attract those new players, and also to maintain those golfers that we have, our customers, in essence. Our goal also is to market programs to individuals, businesses, and the tourism industry that, again, visits our community. Last but not least is to develop a competitive price structure that's relative or reflective of that of the industry, is what we see out in the golf industry. As a facility, we have, we're proud to say that we operate over 206 acres of land. We have 27 holes, offer play in 27 holes. We have a pro shop, snack bar. We have 65 new golf carts that have been delivered just last month. We also have storage facilities, maintenance facility barn, irrigation system, bridge, all these amenities that kind of add to the experience of the golf course, field restrooms, facilities out on the course, maintenance equipment, and most importantly, our staff. We have 17 full-time employees and six part-time employees. When you consider the financial performance of the Tony Butler Golf Course, the trend, unfortunately, is not very favorable. Bottom line, the number of rounds being played have decreased. The big question is why? There's no single answer per se, although there are various factors, both internal and external, that have cost and impact, and some of those I will try to kind of elaborate as I go along in this presentation. From a operating standpoint, operating costs, the graph here shows that 60, almost 67% of our expenses of the 1.2 million budget that we have comes or associated with personnel and associated fringe benefits. Others, the 11.2% is supplies and equipment, and utilities, it's about 8.4%. So those are some of our bigger expenses that we see. On the revenue side, from a revenue standpoint, our primary revenues come from green fees, what we charge, green fees, and also golf cart rentals. Both of them unfortunately have also seen a decline, and what you see there on the graph is the 10-year period, and it shows the trend how it's decreased. When looking at the rounds being played in our golf course, Tony Butler, the rounds being played has seen a drop of about 17.7% over the past five years. So what are the factors that affect our business? We recognize there is competition. There are approximately 33 golf courses in the Rio Grande Valley, all within a 35-mile radius of, 35, 40-mile radius of the city of Harlingen. There's eight municipal-owned golf courses, and there's four, and I point out four because that's what we have, we have four, I'm sorry, we have 27-hole golf courses. Is it the price that's affecting our performance? From the municipal golf courses listed here, here on the table, we are one of the most economical ones, city Harlingen, the fees, which we had been temporarily reduced over a period of the last six months, as of January 1st, have gone back to the original, which is $28 for a round of 18 holes. The twilight rate, which is the rate after 3 o'clock, is at $25. When you compare the prices to the private industry, there's a mixed review, I don't have that information to share with you here, but the private, what we've seen, the private golf courses have more of a flexibility to create packages and provide discounts, and so that's something that we face on a daily basis as far as when we find ourselves competing in this area. Is it the weather? I guess it's another factor that we need to consider. The graph here shows the representative of what the National Golf Course Foundation, the National Golf Foundation tracks golf, tracks rounds of golf being played at a regional and national level. Taken into consideration weather conditions, the National Golf Foundation reports that year-to-date, ending October 18th, nationally, there were about 3.9% less rounds of golf being played at a national level. More on a regional area, and the data being provided here by the National Golf Foundation is looking at, excuse me, San Antonio, Dallas, Fort Worth, and Houston. The Dallas-Fort Worth saw a decrease of 11.8% in rounds being played, Houston, 6.5 rounds being played, and then 1.1% decrease in San Antonio. Again, that's comparing data from the current year to last year. Locally, this, now this is our data for the Tony Butler Golf Course, when we started looking at precipitation and rain days and so forth, we, it was difficult for us to find a strong correlation as to weather, but we do recognize that weather does play a factor. I mean, we talking about hot summer days, rain, when it rains, the field conditions, you don't have the proper drainage and whatnot, and the field conditions may remain unfavorable for a couple of days after it's rained. But the data here presented today doesn't find that there's a strong correlation, but again, we wanted to share this information to show that there is an impact, there is a factor that affects our revenues, which is our direct results of the rounds being played at the golf course. On the marketing side, again, that's something that will help on a positive note. We have repeating customers, and we appreciate them. There's a Ladies Golf Association that has around, an average, about 35 people that play on a weekly basis. There's different other groups, the Pan Am group, there's different winter Texan parks that we market to and encourage them to come and visit. There's also the association with the schools, the middle schools, and high schools that we cater to and encourage them to be part of our, participating in our facility. The facility condition is another factor that could be related to our performance. Our primary product, again, is the golf course, the greens, the fairways, and so forth. There's a quality, this lends to the quality and experience of the group that's visiting our facility, and that experience that perceive value of what they're paying and experience as they play is going to be related to the condition of our facility. There is, and I'm sharing this information to point out that there's some capital improvements that are needed, and again, our goal here is to be at a point where we're sustainable as a business, as a business unit, but also provide revenues that will eventually provide for capital improvement needs that we have currently at our facility. So we have done a, as a committee, as a group internally here in staff, we have gone through a self-assessment to highlight areas that we can focus on for improvement. We have noted that our strengths are, again, are met and can be utilized to overcome some of our weaknesses. We have several strengths that we want to capitalize on and continue to capitalize on to, again, bring success to our golf course. And again, we've been voted best golf course by the Reader's Valley, by the readers of the Valley Morning Star, six of the last seven years. Our pricing position, like I mentioned earlier, it's lower than most golf courses in the area. Geographically, also, we're located at an ideal location between McAllen and Bronsville. Tony Butler is a municipal golf course, municipally owned and operated. We see that as a strength. The golf course is a 27-hole facility, which is not very common, there's only four in the valley. The strength behind that is that we can use, utilize multiple starting Ts and T-times as, and so we can accommodate a larger crowd. It can also be a weakness, but I'll explain that here shortly, and also we have able staff and knowledgeable staff on staff that can help us maintain a facility that's, it's too par, no pun intended. All right. So weaknesses, I talked about, the fees, the green fees are established by city ordinance. They are fixed to a certain extent. That limits our ability to compete, especially we want to compete with the private sector that does a lot of adjustments depending on the time of day, the weather conditions, seasonally, they do packaging and so forth. Tony Butler, like I mentioned, is a 27-hole facility, and it adds to our maintenance costs, it requires that additional attention. The participation in the sport, which relates, has a direct correlation to revenue, is dependent on weather conditions. Participation in the sport as a whole, as golf, is dependent on economic conditions too that are impacted, that impact the amount of disposable income and tourism to our city. Opportunities, we see as continual maintenance and improvement of golf course, healthy. We have seen some improvements over the course of the 12 months. We develop and adopt an ordinance that provides for a competitive flexible fee structure. We have started structuring some of those proposals. We have launched a first-tee link program, which is caters, or caters to the young groups, the kids that we want to bring up and serve that, those future customers that are to play at the golf course. We want to improve, further improve on our website, promote the use of booking system software, so that people can book their tee times, and also sell merchandise online. Instead of holding or having the upfront cost or expenditure of merchandise there at the pro shop, we can sell that online, and it minimizes our risk. Also, we want to capitalize on the, by marketing to our visitors, improve that marketing effort with partnering with the airport, hotel, the convention center, and other venues offering. Their threat, again, is that there is a decrease in the play of golf. There's, demographics show that there's less baby boomers, I guess, playing the sport. Millennium generation is not actively participating in the sport, and to a certain extent, the sport is being, I guess, replaced or augmented, if you would, with simulators or the facility over at Golf, Topgolf. And so those vary, and so that provides an alternative choice to the customer. Disposable income, decreased disposable income, exchange rates for our Canadian visitors also plays a factor, again, weather-dependent. The aging infrastructure in our facility can and will to point and become a factor. And also the competition, the competition out there is discount-driven, and so we need to find a way of maybe being able to compete with that. So what we want to do, or need to do next, is an operational review and a market analysis. Employ the experts, employ the experts in the field, so that we can measure our performance relatively to the competitive market and the facility's potential. There is a certain number of rounds being played out there. What is that number? We don't know necessarily, it's hard to figure out. And so we get an expert to come in, has that experience, that are experts in that type of field, be able to identify, say that from the share of the galls being played, we should be getting, as a facility, in the condition that we're in, the quality and so forth, the market position, we should be getting 10, 20, 30, 40% of that market, and if we're not hitting that market, then that gives us that target to be at. So that we can relatively be able to identify what should be our benchmark. It's hard to point out at this point, not necessarily knowing the ins and outs of the other competitors out there, whether they're municipal or private, as to what they're doing, how they're getting that share. Conduct a thorough market analysis, that's part of that, what I was just saying. It is a competitive market, it's price reactive to weather, the date of, time of day, weekday, and so forth, and so we need to know what are the golfers considering when they're deciding to go play, any specific time or day out of the week. And so that is taking a look at all these factors, our location, the quality of facility, our pricing structure, condition, overall environment, the level of service, customer service, amenities that we provide, the programming, our staff, website, availability of tee times, marketing, and quality of food and beverages that we provide. So speaking with the city manager, we want to move forward with contracting a consultant to do this, to come in here and do that, do a comprehensive review of our facility, our Tony Butler Golf Course, review operations, management, facility, review the external factors that affect the operation of our public golf course, studying all these factors, the demographics, the economy, competition, market, and weather. We expect, if moving forward, that we could get a study done on a budget of around 20, 25,000, and have findings done within 60 to 90 days. That's all my report, Mayor. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do have one question. I met with a group of golfers, and they indicated that the cost of doing this type of evaluation would be in the $6,000 range. Is there a difference between what they're talking about and what we're going to be looking at? What would you consider the difference?
Well, I think the $6,000, $7,000 quote, that, because we got something similar, but it was on a monthly rate, and so it's dependent on the amount of time that the consultant's going to be on board. That's the only correlation I can find to that statement. I know that we have spoken to several companies out there, the National Golf Foundation being one of them, and their average price collectively, including reimbursables like travel expenses and so forth, averaged to be about around 20, 25,000.
And these would be people that are affiliated with the PGA and some of the other national affiliations that are out there?
Yes, that's correct.
Any questions? I have a question. Looking at the report, when I was looking at it, what I didn't see, and I know it's in there, it's just not presented, is if you look back 10 years, 20 years, the cost to run that, that operation, the 206 acres of it, because I always look at costs, you know, how much is it costing the city to operate? And how much has that changed between 10 years ago, you know, five years ago? Because if you have, your revenues coming down, your expenses are going up, that's, as far as an operation standpoint, you said that's part of your mission statement, is trying to stay afloat. I'd like to see, I mean, and that's something maybe the consultant can do, with saying, okay, it cost X amount of dollars to run 10 years ago, and it's cost this much more, because you have to have realistic expectations from, you know, our staff and what, are we understaffed, are we overstaffed? But again, it's always, how much money does it cost to operate, and what has changed in the last 10 to 15 years, and how can we address that, either through technology or through, you know, something? But that's what I didn't see in the report, you know, is to get a handle on it. You're showing your income and your losses, but how much, what is the break-even point, right? And how much has that changed over the years? That's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, when I saw the 67% on salaries, that's kind of pretty close to what retail would be, you know? In retail, we would look at the cost of the operation, and our number-one cost in any retail is always that, you know, besides the cost of the merchandise, once you get into that profitability, how much of that pie is being eaten by salaries? And so I saw 67, to me, that rang pretty close, but I kind of agree with him, you know, what has changed in 10 years as far as the cost? know, what has changed in 10 years as far as the cost of operations? But I think your, your recommendation that you're making is for us to hire a consultant.
That's correct.
And I think that's where we need to focus, because I don't think any one of us up here, or even collectively up here, can come up with the right answer for this.
Yeah. And we, and we've done some of that preliminary research as far as on the expense side, because again, we, we are, uh, we are, uh, expected to do that, to do that. And so one of the things I, I looked at is the utility, the utility cost, for example, water. One of the biggest expenses out there for golf courses, uh, is, is the water, watering your greens. We have a flat fee, we have an agreement with the irrigation district and that's a, at a flat fee. And so that's a fixed cost and it's about, uh, 15, $15,000 a year, which is very, very small.
That's nothing.
There's other golf courses out there that are paying 7,500,000. So we, we've looked for areas where we can cut, uh, and, and we'll continue doing that too.
And this is a problem that's not just unique to Tony Butler Golf Course. I mean, it's to almost every golf course around. Um, and so they're all struggling to, to deal with the same problems that we are. I know the Harlingen Country Club has had that problem and I would imagine Treasure Hills is also struggling with that. And they're very expensive to maintain and, um, so I think the consultant is the way to go. Um, when we're, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you've got an enterprise that's making, you know, top line revenue of 800,000 to 900,000 dollars to try to get it back in the black, $20,000 is not a large amount of money.
And this is not an action item.
And, and the other thing that the, the salaries, that's almost exactly in line with what the city does. I mean, we're about, when you look at fire and police and everything else, we're maybe a little bit higher than that, but it's about two-thirds of what we spend is for people, because we're in kind of a, that kind of business.
Service.
Service business.
Service business, right. Okay. All right. Does anybody have any other questions for, for Carlos, the city manager and somebody else?
Well, this is not an action item. Uh, this is just a presentation to show the progress that we've made and looking at this issue. Uh, and the intent is to hire a consultant and bring somebody who understands the industry and give us recommendations after they do a comprehensive review of the market and our golf course. So once we have that information, we will come back to the city council with those recommendations.
Um, we've had some people signed up for citizens communication and I think most of those, most of the people who signed up want to talk about the golf course, so we're gonna let you go. I'm gonna let you go now, assuming that you did sign up for the golf course. If you didn't sign up for the golf course, then we'll, we'll, we'll take you up at the regular time for citizen communication. I'll let Amanda call you if you signed up to talk about the golf course. We want you to come up to the podium and, uh, state your name and give us your address and, uh, where you live and then, uh, I think you have, Amanda will give you a timer, give you some time.
Thank you for the privilege of speaking before this illustrious group and, and all of you. I too am a golfer, but I want to talk about one thing that...
If I, if I could just interrupt you again, remember what I said? I asked everybody to give their name and their, and give, tell us, tell us where you live, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Mike Hendrick, I live at 818 East Bowie Avenue, probably the oldest neighborhood in Harlingen, just north of Boston Elementary. I am a school teacher and on the weekends, I am a pastor. What I want to talk about is accountability. I'm sitting here listening to you and listening to the presentation and I think about two areas of accountability, horizontal and vertical. Am I accountable to people where I work? I'm also accountable to my wife, uh, 48 years. And so you can agree with that, right? But horizontally, we're all accountable to the citizens of the community through the ballot box, through comments, et cetera. Vertically, I'm accountable to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And that is the most heavy accountability that I face. And so you have some weighty decisions to make. And so when you make those decisions, keep in mind those two accountabilities, horizontal and especially vertical. And trust me, when I say we will be listening, reading the newspaper, holding you accountable, but I will also have you in my prayers. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, the former mayor of LaFaria.
Gentlemen, I'm from LaFaria originally.
Glad to have you here.
I've been a Harlingen citizen almost two years now. My name is Steve Brewer. I live at 2825 Point Ciana here in Treasure Hills. Read the paper a lot, grew up playing golf at Tony Butler, know the course extremely well. I want to save you guys from making a colossal mistake. If you sell off the, the short nine holes of golf, you're selling off history. Back in 1931 to 37, this was a PGA tour stop for the state of Texas. Ben Hogan, Walter Hagen, Gene Sarrazin, many, many, many famous golfers came to Harlingen to play. And that, those nine holes right there was, was the original front nine for the Harlingen Country Club and for the course back then. A golf course is not just a business that's got a profit, loss and break even. This is a destination place. You've got history on your side. You have a golf course that's paid for. It's been neglected horribly the last 20 years, in my opinion. It certainly needs to be upgraded, but gosh, it's a destination point. Cities are desperate for destination points, whether it's convention center, whether it's a Bass Pro Shop, you make an investment and you make an investment in the future that pays off in the longer run. You enhance this golf course, make those 27 holes fantastic condition, you'll draw a lot more rounds of golf valleywide. We're in the perfect location, the center of the valley and it's, it's an extremely famous golf course and it's history. So don't blow off history. And I know there's, I see a lot of the fellow golfers here that I've played with many, many times. Tony Butler is a, is a gem to take care of, it's a jewel, but don't cut it up. I mean, you can take land from Victor Park or something, you don't have to take the, the golf course's history away. Thank you for your time, gentlemen. Thank you.
I apologize if I mispronounced this name. It looks either like Tom or Tim Ellof?
Elliot.
Elliot, okay. See, that doesn't look like Elliot.
Mr. Ellof is on the next one.
You know, I looked at that and I know your name and I, maybe a penmanship course.
I've been told that many times, so. Anyway, my name's Tim Elliott, 1025 East Leggett here in Harlingen. Uh, I'm not going to reiterate what Steve said, because he's right on, but I'd like to talk a little bit about the policies and stuff that we've got. You've got, we are in such a competitive issue right now. You cannot do the same thing you've done for 20 years, which is pretty much, we had this conversation, Dan and I, and we have, haven't done anything much different. You have to change. Competition is there. You're gonna have to get your golfers, show them a good time. We don't. You gotta get those guys to come in, you gotta get them to come in after the course, get a sandwich, have a couple beers, but you gotta give them a reason to do that. You've gotta create atmosphere. We don't have it. We haven't had it in a long time. If you want to do that, you're gonna have to take that ordinance up there and shove it somewhere and create something else that's, that's workable. Now, this, this guy, they're gonna come in there, they're gonna give you some great ideas, but you've got great ideas all over the valley. You go down to Riverbend, they've got ideas. You go down to, uh, Brownsville Golf City Course, they've got some great ideas. They're doing happy hour now during football games to bring people into their pro shop. There's all kinds of things that you can do. By the way, Mr. Liao, that was, that $6,000 was for the greenskeeper, not for the overall look. It wasn't, it wasn't that issue. But you gotta look at your marketing. Without any marketing, this time of day and this year, you ain't got jack. They're gonna go somewhere else, cause these golfers will play, whether it's, whether it's here or elsewhere. Something else that's happened as well too, these folks are mobile. They're not gonna come to Tony Butler and play there all the time. They gotta have a reason to come there. They'll go to Brownsville, they're gonna go to McAllen, they're gonna go to West Dakota play. And like Steve said, this course is our playground. This is where these people normally will play, but they're gonna play elsewhere unless you give them a reason to stay here. That's it. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you very much.
Buck Brickley.
Hey, guys. Nice to see you again, Buck Brickley. 125 Arcadia Drive. Okay, here's the old cliche, you don't know what you don't know. Anybody ever heard that? You guys don't play golf, so you don't know nothing about golf, all right? But you're gonna try to tell us if it's a good business deal or not, okay? Is it a good business deal or not? Well, by the bookkeeping, it says it's not, all right? But the, the things that go on after the golf course, people stay and go to restaurants here, they go around town. One other thing is that, uh, we've heard that you need some people that know a little bit about, oh, um, hospitality, okay? This is not only a golf industry, it's hospitality and recreation. If you don't combine the two, then, uh, you're not going to be successful. I still got a minute. Other things that go along with this are, are the, the history, everything's been said that I wanted to say up here, except that, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to correct a few things about what the presentation was. He talked about the millennials are not coming to play golf. Fact of the matter is, 26% of the age group between 18 and 35 is the golfing population. So to say that we're not, that millennials are not coming in to play is not correct. Another thing is, do you know a sport that you will call a penalty on yourself? That develops character, my friends. I'm done.
That's, that's everybody who's signed up, so, uh, is there, does anybody have any other questions? Let me just say, um, a couple of things. One is, Buck, I have read Ben Hogan's Five Fundamentals of Golf, so, just never, just never took with me. That's a great book. When we, we're going, the last couple of budget processes, every summer, we go through a budget process and we, and we look at every department and we look at, uh, how we're doing, cause we want to be responsible with the taxpayers' money and we want to be, um, and we want to, if, if there's an issue there, we want to address it. And this has come up in the last couple of budget sessions, the last couple of years, where we've noticed a trend where, um, you know, for a long time, there was, there was, there were excess revenues from the, from, from the golf course. And then the last few years, that, it's been just the opposite. Uh, you saw the trend line that Carlos pointed out. And so we wanted to address this. You know, frankly, I think we got spoiled for a long time because, uh, rather than not making improvements out there, we did make improvements, because you had a fund balance that built up to over a million dollars and that's what we paid, uh, that was how we were able to pay for the new clubhouse that's out there. Is, is because of the success of Tony Butler, uh, we had that, um, cash in the bank to write a check and not borrow money to, uh, to improve the facility out there. And that's what the, uh, the city did. But as we see the revenues declining and we see, uh, a lot of having, the city, the taxpayers having to, uh, for, for, the way we have this classified as, as an enterprise fund, to, to subsidize that, we wanted to address it. And that's what you're seeing right now. Nope, uh, there's no action that's gonna be taken tonight. I think we're a long way away from making any, you know, big decision. I know that there were some, must have been some discussion. I'm not, is not privy to it, but there must have been some discussion within this committee meeting about the possibility of selling the nine holes. Uh, and that obviously is what's gotten everybody's attention and it's gotten the newspapers' attention. Uh, many of you have sent me, uh, and probably the, and city commissioners, communications about this and given some really good ideas. And, um, I have tried to respond to each and every one of you. If you didn't get a response, uh, call me again or write me again, because I, uh, because I've tried to respond to every one of you that has reached out and we really do appreciate your input, uh, in that forum and we appreciate your input tonight. How, uh, are, do we have any winner Texans here tonight? Raise your hand. We know. I wanna, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for, uh, uh, coming to our community. Thank you for, uh, spending some time out of your year here with us. We really do appreciate you. We, we really do. We value your being here and we want to make sure this golf course is a great course for you to come back to and play and, and, uh, and, and have this recreational opportunity. Uh, and, and I, I just want to express all of our appreciation for your interest in our community and for being here. Uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna look at this real, measured, we're gonna try to find ways that we can, uh, balance, uh, balance the books out there. That's, that's what we need to do. And lots of you, including Tim tonight and others, have given good suggestions and, and we're gonna take a look at that and that's why we want to do the study and that's why we'll want to continue to study this issue so that we can continue to make Tony Butler the best course it possibly can be. Uh, and, and, and secondly, uh, that we can try to, uh, increase more people playing on the course. And, and finally, overall, just promote the sport, uh, within, within the area, cause it is a great sport. It's a great sport. It promotes health in the community. It, it gives everybody an opportunity to get outside, walk around, do something and, uh, and I, uh, whether I play or not, I value every single opportunity that we can encourage our citizens to get out in the outdoors and move around and improve their health and maintain their health. So you have our commitment, uh, even though we're not taking any action tonight, that we're gonna look at this real, uh, in a, in a very serious way and we're gonna look at the ways we can improve. So I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, expressing your interest. I want to thank you for your interest in our community. And, uh, with that, we'll go on to the next item. Next item is board appointments.
I have one. I wanted to reappoint, uh, Rich, Richard Newton to the Veterans Board.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the board?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign. Item seven, citizen communication, we can handle that. And so ladies and gentlemen, our meeting is adjourned. Thanks again for coming out tonight.